Thank you.
Test one, two. Test one, two.
Meeting is called to order. Well, this is certainly a cozy little crowd that we have tonight. It will make the secret ballot that we have to take on the next, on the second article we deal with, pretty easy, I suspect. I'm a little bit disappointed tonight that Chief Robinson isn't here. I don't know how many of you have noticed in the last two nights, but he had on these incredibly wild ties. They were really gaudy. And there's one thing I can't stand is a gaudy tie. And neither can Herman Kavakov. Herman, get up and show the people that tie you're wearing. Actually, this is my last night of town meeting tie. And with the crowd here, who's clapping? Thank you. I almost like those personal references. Okay. We're going to start in with Article 32, the Minuteman Regional School Assessment. And I think we'll see something a little bit different from our school representative by Wilsie because we'll see a presentation on Minuteman. And we haven't seen one of those in some time. I think it'll be worthwhile. The motion is, Mr. Wilsie moves that the Minuteman Science and Technology High School Assessment for the period July 1st, 1998, to June 30th, 1999, in the amount of $428,167 be raised and appropriated in its entirety. Do I hear a second? It's been moved and seconded, Mr. Wilsie.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I feel a little bit like a warm-up act at this point. I am Mr. McKenzie's appointee to the School Committee at Minuteman Tech. I am about to complete my second three-year term. And for that, I thank Mr. Moderator. I will never, ever, ever forget you for this.
Maybe by the end of your third term, you will, Bob. I don't know.
I'm joined this evening by Dr. Ron Fitzgerald, who is resident of Acton, a longtime resident of Acton. He's also the superintendent of Minuteman Tech. I wanted to take this opportunity this evening to tell you all about Minuteman Tech because the moderator has said we don't do this too often. We haven't done it since I've been in this position. But I think it's that you all know at least a little bit about the Acton Schools and the Acton-Boxborough High School. But my assumption is that very few of you know much about Minuteman Tech. So although it is only a slice of the pies that we've seen on the charts in the past few nights, I think it's important that you understand your investment and what you are getting for your investment. Two points that I'd like to make right off the bat. The first is that Minuteman Tech and the Acton Schools have always worked very closely together to partner within as many programs as possible. And Minuteman Tech has as good a relationship with the Acton Schools as with any of our member, other member towns. The two systems continually work together to explore new opportunities. And you'll hear about some of those this evening. The second thing that I'd like to say right away is that Minuteman Tech is facing some very challenging times. We are at a position where education, the Ed Reform Act has virtually nullified the funding mechanism of our regional agreement. And we are in a position where we must plan and prepare for the future. And that is going to involve probably some restructuring, reinventing of the school, and possibly some legislation to correct the inequities that currently exist. And I will be talking about that also this evening. For those unfamiliar with Minuteman, it's a 16 district region. Our member towns include, as well as Acton and Boxborough, but we go to Lancaster, Stowe, Bolton, Needham is a member, Lexington, Concord, Carlisle, Lincoln, Sudbury, Weston-Weyland. That's most of them, if not all of them. Our situation is with our member district town, though, is that we are very limited by what we can do as a result of the 16-member town. Currently enrollment consists, through our member towns, is less than half of the population of the school. And we have around 950 students currently enrolled in the school. More than half of those come from towns outside of our district, which creates a real problem in the funding. The funding is inequitable. We're funded, basically, each group is funded three different ways. We have choice students that are funded at about $5,000 apiece. We have tuition students at around $9,000 to $10,000 apiece. Then we have our member towns. The cost per pupil can range from anywhere from just over $6,000 to on up to $20,000, depending on the town. You can see the difficulties in managing that type of situation. But Minuteman is defined by its philosophy, which is hands-on experiential learning. Studies have shown that 60% of our learners learn better in a hands-on, learn by doing, experiential setting. And that's what Minuteman is all about. In addition, Minuteman connects the classroom with the world of work. And students are energized because of that. Our curriculum is driven by industry, professionals in industry. Each department in our school works closely with an advisory committee made up of industry professionals who help them design a curriculum that will enable the students either to go to college or go directly to work and utilize those skills. They not only support our curriculum, they support us in many cases through equipment donations, through reduced prices for some equipment, or in some cases, many cases, grants and donations of revenue. We, Minuteman Tech was successful last year in generating over $1.6 million in grants. Our graduates have a number of options when they go, at least two options anyway, when they graduate. One is to go to college, and the other is to go directly to work. 1996, 43% of the graduates went to college, 4% went on to advanced technical training, a total of 47%. In the 1997 school year, 49% went to college, 3% to advanced technical training, or 52%. But I think it's important to notice that the bottom, that in our technical division, 90% of the kids went to college, whereas in the commercial division, it's 50%, and in the trades, 25%. There are basically three different divisions in the school. Those are the three. Our electromechanical program, I think, close to 98% of the students go to college. The other options for the students is to go directly to work. And two examples would be in our biotechnology program. A high school graduate going directly to work will make in the range of $20,000 to $25,000. We also have an agreement just within the past couple of weeks with General Motors. General Motors is in desperate need of master technicians. Minuteman Tech has been selected as one of five schools in Massachusetts to participate in this program, to train automotive technicians. The students who graduate from this program within three years could be making between $30,000 and $50,000. What I enjoy most about Minuteman Tech is the fact that it's an entrepreneurial school is very creative. And we get involved a lot with the creative problem solving and working with our member towns. One example is the junior high program, which I'll talk about a little bit later. Another is in line with reinventing the school. I've appointed as chairman of this committee, an innovations committee, to look at ways to redesign the school, to restructure the funding mechanism. And we've invited to participate on that committee, in addition to members of the school committee, the school staff, professionals from industry. And we're very pleased to have participating on that committee, the Northeast Regional Vice President of the National Alliance for Business, the executive director of the Massachusetts Biotechnology Council, the executive director of the Biotechnology Center for Excellence, the project director for Science, Technology, and Public Policy Program at the JFK School of Government. And all of these are going to be valuable contributors to our plans for the future. The school committee this year voted to hire a director of development that will help us generate more revenue for the school, that will help reduce assessments for the member towns. And then most recently, you may have read about in the paper, is our project with a developer that will potentially create for us on campus some instructional centers. One, an advanced technology center, and another, an intern training center, where we have executive or extended stay hotel, and an assisted living center. What's really pleasing to me about this project is that it will be at no cost to our member towns. It's a $15 million project. In addition, the project will generate revenue for our district, as well as provide internship opportunities and classroom space for us to conduct our programs. That's in the very preliminary stages. We have to work very closely with the towns of Lincoln and Lexington, and also the National Park Service. But I think that program's got tremendous potential. I'd also like to mention that as a result of our programs over the years, Minuteman Tech has developed a worldwide reputation. And in just the past month, we've had visitors from Japan, Russia, French, teachers and educators and students tour the school to learn more about the curriculum at Minuteman Tech. From the United States, educators from Georgia, Pennsylvania, Texas, as well as Massachusetts, are touring the school. I'm also pleased that over the past couple of years, we've been able to guide members of our community through Minuteman Tech, including members of the Board of Selectmen and the town managers, the members of the FinCon. Of course, Issa has been through the school many times, and Steve Donovan, Andy Palmer, Nancy Banks, the Gate School Council has been to the school, and the PTO, the School Business Partnership from the Chamber of Commerce, and members of the Rotary Club. I think it's important that you really understand what Minuteman Tech is all about. And unless you've seen it, you can't really appreciate what it offers for a student. And that is hands-on experiential learning. And I wish all of you could tour the school physically, but since you can't, I brought a video tonight to take you on a brief tour of Minuteman Tech. I think you'll recognize the tour guide. And once the video is completed, then I'll get into some specific numbers for the budget.
......................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
I was very pleased when that tape was first broadcast because I think it's an exceptional look at what Minuteman Tech has to offer. And I think there are tremendous opportunities for this community. It is a real asset for the community. And I think there are tremendous opportunities to continue to work with the local schools to expand what we're able to offer locally with Minuteman Tech, whether as full-time students or as part-time students. Now for the budget numbers. Our technology division this year is down slightly. The commercial division is also down slightly. Trades at $161,492 is about the same as last year. In academics, we added a four-year science curriculum.
Bob, could you just push that over so it's a little more visible? Great, thank you.
Thank you. Four-year science. In the support, that's up slightly. We're undergoing our certification now, review, and the business office and insurance has increased also, so that's slightly up in support. Salaries is up almost 4.5%. What's that with the? That's with the raise increments and degrees. And for a total budget of just over $13 million, we add another almost $52,000 for a second teacher at the junior high here. That will be, that cost is shared by Acton and Boxborough. And this is revenue. Chapter 78, that's going to slightly increase over two, just over $2 million. Transportation aid at $484. Tuition, superintendent was rushing when he typed this, it is at $1.7 million. Choice revenue is $1.2. Interest, we've added in here at $180,000. A budget cuts of $189 for a total of revenue of just over $6 million. Subtract that from the budget, and the assessment is just over $7 million. That's up 2.7% without the new teacher here, but including that teacher, it's up 3.5%. Now, that assessment is divided amongst the, theoretically, according to our agreement, that assessment is divided amongst the member towns. Unfortunately, with Ed Reform, we lose control at that point, and we wait for news from the state about what the assessment is going to be for each member town. According to our agreement, our assessment for Acton this year would have been $439. It was reduced by the state, which is fortunate for Acton this year. Unfortunately for towns like Stowe, whose assessment was increased by $90,000 by the state, it's not quite as fair. And you can see how it's very frustrating for us to lose control like that. But our assessment this year is $428,000. Total enrollment, including full-time students, the number of part-time programs that we offer, and including the students in the junior high school who participate in our program there, the total is about 67 students that we educate through Minuteman Tech for a total of about $6,000, just over $6,000 per student. This shows you how we arrive at the total per student. The final assessment for '97, '98 was $311,000, and you can see how that's up. One FTE pupil represents 1,080 hours of attendance in one course or another. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Bob. We'd like to hear now from the selectman, Mr. Fredericks.
The Board of Selectmen recommends this article.
And the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommends the Minuteman Regional Assessment of $428,167. We recognize that this year's assessment is 38% higher than last year's $311,000. But it includes an increase in the full-time students, and also $43,000 for a full-time teacher to be supplied to the junior high. Since it's a regional school, our proportion of the budget is more directly related to the enrollment. The overall Minuteman school budget increase was only less than 4%. We recommend the article.
Comments from the town meeting members? I see no one standing, so we'll vote. All in favor of the motion as read, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Bob, and thank you, Ron. We move to Article 33. Before we do, I also should recognize and thank the volunteers from Cablevision, the three people, and there's probably been more than that here, but there are three people here all the time from Cablevision showing this on TV. And so thank you very much for doing that and volunteering your time. We will move on to... We'll move on to one of the most exciting things that happens at town meeting. It's a secret ballot. And we will have one, which is required by law, for the next article which deals with amending the regional schools agreement. There aren't many people here tonight, so I think we can do this pretty promptly, at least the voting part of it. Motion. Ms. Williams moves that the agreement for the regional school district for the towns of Acton and Boxborough be amended in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 71, Section 14E, to provide that the vote of each member of the regional school district committee shall be weighted according to the population of the town the member represents as determined by the most recent town census. Do I hear a second?
Aye.
Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We bring this article before you tonight to correct the unconstitutional voting procedure at the regional school committee. With legal counsel and after careful consideration of five alternative solutions to achieving proportional representation, we bring this amendment to our regional agreement for awaited voting for you tonight. The same amendment now needs to be passed at the Boxborough Annual Town Meeting in May to conclude the amending process. Tonight's proposal is just the beginning. As Phil Zelikow mentioned last night, we have constituted a regional review committee to address other issues of this agreement. Acton's representatives to that committee are Chair Lee Stuntz from the school committee, Dora Hunter, and Ann Ridley. Two decisions have already met with unanimous approval. All meetings will be open to the public, and the committee has also agreed to alternate meeting locations between the two towns, beginning on April 15th in Acton, in room 114 of RJ Gray Junior High School at 4:30. We urge you to vote yes tonight to resolve the current unconstitutional voting procedure for the regional school committee. Thank you.
From the Board of Selectmen?
Ladies and gentlemen, the Board of Selectmen supports this. This really, on a practical basis, between Acton and Boxborough, in my humble opinion, is of not very much consequence. The region has operated satisfactorily in regard to voting and interaction of the membership as far as I'm aware, at least it did during my six years that we were there. And the voting arrangement was agreed between the towns. However, in 1986, in a case called Kelleher versus Southeast Regional Vocational Technical High School District, the First Circuit Court of Appeals, sitting in Boston, heard a case where a citizen of Brockton was challenging a nine-member region, only differs from our region in the sense that it had more members. And the opinion that issued in November 1986 says, and I quote in part, "The district argues the principle of one person, one vote is inapplicable because of the voluntary nature of the association of the nine-member communities. That a majority of the voters, even those whose votes are diluted, approve the apportionment scheme is irrelevant. One's right to life, liberty, and property, and other fundamental rights may not be submitted to a vote; they depend on the outcome of no election. A citizen's constitutional rights can hardly be infringed simply because a majority of the people choose that. Notwithstanding that the district's apportionment scheme was freely negotiated and approved by the citizens of each member city or town, it violates the one-person, one-vote principle because by not dividing the district's elected committee members on a population basis as nearly as practical, it deprives voters of the constitutional right to cast an equally weighted vote." That is a binding decision in this circuit, which includes Massachusetts. The state legislature recognized the decision in March of 1988, about a year and a half later, passed legislation, an emergency preamble, the statute that was cited in the motion, which adopted the court's suggestions as to the alternate ways on which a constitutional apportionment of a regional high school district could be effectuated. The school committee has chosen one of those portions, one of those methods. And as someone who has, in several professions, sworn to uphold the Constitution, I would suggest to you that we really have no choice in this matter. It should be voted, so we hardly recommend it. Thank you.
And from the Finance Committee, please.
The Finance Committee recommends a yes vote on this article.
Any comment from the town meeting members? Seeing nobody standing, we'll vote. How we'll vote, by law, has to be by secret ballot. Now, this is important. This is... Bell, who's Bell Cho, are you prepared for the vote? This is, Bell, who's Bell Cho, are you prepared for the vote? We need a couple of ballot boxes, and we'll file everybody down the aisle next to Mr. Cadillac, and the aisles next to Mr. Gresser, down here, Mr. Black, this aisle, Aaronson's aisle. And we'll deposit either a yes or a no in the ballot box. Once you've deposited a yes or no, no fear saying, "I deposited the wrong thing," and fishing in and getting it out. Now, if you decide to vote yes, you put the yes in, you put the no in the wastebasket next to it. And then, we will count them, and that shouldn't take us too long. Are we prepared, Bell, to start? Or you just tell me when you're ready to start? These look like very expensive... Do you think that we could get Minuteman to build us a couple of decent ballot boxes? Yes, and the tellers who are outside should also come down to vote if they choose. And I think we're prepared, so if you would line up and come down these two aisles at your choice, remember putting your vote in the ballot box and disposing of your other vote. And then, file back around, not up the same aisle. I didn't give instructions to the stage. I think, Feed, you guys could figure it out.
We're not lucky, Charlie. We're not lucky.
No. I can vote either make or break a tie, but that's the only time.
All those in favor here, all those in favor over there.
Sure. We're supposed to meet next week. You want to discuss them? Before?
Someone dropped it. They'll lose their right to that. Is this the color we're using tonight?
That's it.
It is? Okay. Thank you very much. I can't ask someone because someone could...
Are we ready, Bell?
You're not. Thanks, Bob.
Are you...
Just to wake you all up.
Did you vote once or twice?
I can't remember. There were so many.
Early in August.
Early in August. This is Chicago.
That's insubtle, too. A lot of dead people voted insubtle.
Yes, they do. It's amazing.
White can't hear. Ask them what our ideas.
We want to vote now.
They're fighting over ideas.
We want to check out any ballots.
Some kind of address.
It's an address, yeah. But try to remember what it stands for.
Well, she's sitting down. Everybody's voted? We'll just quickly count the votes then.
Thank you very much.
If there were a great many people here, five or six hundred, and it would take us some time to count the votes, we would move on to the next article and start it, but it will only take us a couple of minutes, so we might as well count it and get it out of the way. When we come to Articles forty through forty-five, my understanding is that the motion in each of those will be to take no action. And so, given that, we'll take one motion for all articles.
Not me. I'm getting there before Nancy. I'm gonna go. I'm gonna just say, neater, neater, neater.
The issue is a pocket. The issue is...
The article squeaked through one thirty-eight to five, so the motion has carried. Article thirty-four, dealing with the Acton-Boxborough Regional School Assessment, the motion under that article follows. Ms. Williams moves that the Acton-Boxborough Regional School Assessment for the period July first, nineteen ninety-eight, to June thirtieth, nineteen ninety-nine, and the amount of eleven million, four hundred and seven thousand, four hundred and fifteen dollars be raised and appropriated. And to raise such amount, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars be transferred from free cash, and eleven million, two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, four hundred and fifteen dollars be raised and appropriated. Do I hear a second? Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The assessment request that we bring before you tonight reflects a budget that does not meet the need to educate our students at the competitive level that we would prefer. The regional school committee made a decision reluctantly to recognize the importance of addressing local capital needs, and therefore instructed the administration to formulate a budget for ninety-eight, ninety-nine that did not require an override. This was an extremely difficult decision to make. At the region, we are faced with state mandates that require every single student to be in a directed instructional situation for nine hundred and ninety hours every year. We have neither the funds nor the space to provide the programs or staff to meet that mandate. We are also facing increasing enrollment at the junior and senior high schools, and this budget does not reflect the needs created by these additional students. Eight years ago, Acton and Acton-Boxborough decided to accept choice students to enrich the mix of our student body and to provide much-needed revenue. We are now at the end of that era. The students we accepted in our elementary schools are now passing through the region. We no longer can provide space for new choice students, and this has tremendous impact on next year's budget. Professional staff and other necessary costs, once funded through choice to educate all our students, must now and in the future be funded from regional operating budgets for only Acton and Boxborough's growing enrollment. The regional school committee has brought to you what we believe is an adequate budget, and we urge you to vote yes. And, Mr. Moderator, we request the town meeting vote to allow our superintendent, Dr. Easter Zimmerman, to speak before us tonight.
Thank you. Dr. Zimmerman is not a resident of Acton, and therefore, you will have to vote in order to hear her. All in favor of hearing from Dr. Zimmerman, say aye. All say no, it's unanimous. Dr. Zimmerman?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm always a little nervous.
You were gonna get a righ... I couldn't hear the no's anyway, so...
This presentation is an annual pleasure for the school system because we are proud to talk about the regional schools. And speaking of both pleasure and pride, please look at this list of student accomplishments from nineteen ninety-seven, ninety-eight. I don't expect you to be able to read all of the eighteen accomplishments, but by mentioning a few, I think you will get the idea. This is the seventh consecutive year that our academic decathlon team has been state champion. This is the third consecutive year that the girls' ice hockey team has been state champion. There were six national merit finalists and thirty-two commended students. The jazz band and the marching band both won silver medals in their respective state competitions. And the Boston Globe Art Awards recognized thirteen of our students, including three junior high school students. That's good news. And there's more good news. Once again, we have proposed an adequate budget for a school system which is deemed by many to be excellent. However, even our adequate budget, as Mrs. Williams indicated, does not allow us to meet some of the challenges that we're facing and will continue to face. This is the bad news. Increasing enrollment, the need to maintain and expand our buildings, increasing costs for special education, meeting the time and learning requirements, matching new program needs, and dealing with charter school tuitions. We present our budget and our budget books according to four categories. In anticipation of a question or comment that would probably come later, let me say that our budget is developed through interaction among teachers, administrators, parents, school councils, and the school committee. The school committee votes budget guidelines, and we prepare a schedule. We also interact with members of the other town boards. We use a combination of top-down and bottom-up decision-making, and our budget includes all aspects of the educational enterprise. However, for capital items, historically, when there's been an exceptional capital project, either building-related or technology-related, we have brought it as a separate warrant article to town meeting. This year, as you've heard, we do not have any such capital warrant articles because the committee's made the conscious decision to request twenty-two, twenty-one million dollars to get essentially two new elementary buildings, replacing our two oldest ones. You can see that the biggest piece of this pie, we're all into pies this year, continues to be personnel, a category that includes salaries, benefits, and professional development. And this is seventy-seven point six percent of the regional budget. When we talk about personnel, we need to look at how personnel relates to the student enrollment. This is a new slide for us. It has two vertical axes. The one on your left is in hundreds of students. The orange represents Acton-Boxborough, and the blue represents choice students. The red, Acton-Boxborough, the blue, choice. That matches the left axis. The axis on the right is in tens and represents staff. The green represents teachers, and the purple represents non-certified personnel. Instructional assistants for special education students to man the technology labs and the high school library, as an example. Since nineteen ninety, the student population, including choice, has increased from sixteen ninety-four to twenty-eighty-one, two thousand and eighty-one, an increase of twenty-three percent. Our certified staff has gone from a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and fifty-nine, or twenty-seven percent. Our non-certified staff has gone from sixty to eighty-five, or forty-two percent. These last two categories, both certified and non-certified, their increases have been driven, to some extent, by imperatives from special education, but also imperatives from technology and from our change in the library at the high school. We've also added monitors at the high school. And so, these classroom assistants for special education, technology assistants, library assistants, and monitors are all part of the non-certified staff. But certified and non-certified staff are not the only employees we have. Our budget is extremely complex. Teaching is the big red piece of the pie. It is the biggest portion of our budget by far. But at the region, we also have athletic personnel, custodians, bus drivers, secretaries, et cetera. Everybody has an essential job to do, although the jobs are very different. If we look at our first pie again, of the other three categories, not personnel, the second smallest is materials and supplies. The smallest, as you can see, which is also almost negligible, is equipment. In terms of materials and supplies, we use an allocation figure in order to... In terms of materials and supplies, we use an allocation figure in order to ensure parity between the two schools. What you're looking at is the per pupil allocation that we give to the principals for each student in each of the two schools. And you'll notice that for next year, it will be the same as this year. It will be two hundred and forty-four dollars for the high school, for each of the high school students, and two hundred and fifteen dollars for each of the junior high school students. This leads us to present to you what we call the drivers, those items in our budget that drive the increases. And there are three major ones. The first one is our salaries and our benefits, the contractual personnel obligations that we have, and that represents an increase of more than a half a million dollars. The second one is the one that Mrs. Williams alluded to. It's the costs that were formerly in the choice budget, covered by choice revenue, which need to be moved to the appropriated budget because of the decline in space for choice students, and that's close to four hundred thousand dollars. This has been a gradual process the last couple of years, but this year it's a really big hit. And then, our third driver is some additional service that is required by our special education students. If you're trying, if you're trying to add up the percentages in the left part of the percentage increase box and trying to get to six point four percent, you're not going to get there, because these are the three major drivers. You're almost gonna get there, and you're gonna think we made a mistake, but it's because this represents the three major drivers, not all of the increases in our budget. But these are the major ones. Our proposed budget is sixteen million, five hundred and forty-eight thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five dollars. But we need to look at this number from two other perspectives. While the appropriated budget increase is a million dollars, or six point four percent, the choice budget is going down by half a million dollars. So the overall increase in the amount of money that we have to use for our students in our schools is, in reality, really only two point eight percent, which we feel is an impressively small percentage in this day and age, especially given the growing population. But, as we've just warned you, our choice enrollment is declining as Acton and Boxborough population increases. This is a history of choice enrollment from FY ninety-two to its demise in two thousand and three, and you can see it went up and it's coming down. By contrast, if you look at this slide, what you see is the story of our total enrollment from the years nineteen ninety to two thousand and five. We've added two more years at either end. The red represents Acton-Boxborough students, and you can see the steady incline in the red, and those students are in our system, so we're not predicting them. We know we have them. They're in our system, and they're over Blanchard. But as our student population, our student population, the red, increases, the red converges with the blue. The blue represents both Acton-Boxborough and choice. And you can see that the two lines converge. Our choice revenue vanishes, and yet we still have the same number of students we need to serve. We're serving them now without choice revenue, which means it has to be appropriated revenue. And as we increase our numbers, not only do we need to provide the same services, but in some cases, more services. The other perspective is that at the region, we ask you not to vote the budget, but to vote an assessment, and the increase in Acton's assessment for next year is seven hundred and two thousand, three hundred and sixty-six dollars. There is a lot of confusion about the funding of the regional schools, and it's not to be surprised at, because it has two parts. The first part, which is capital, that is building, according to the current agreement, Acton pays ninety-five percent, and Boxborough pays five percent. Our capital warrant articles were paid for that way. But for operations, the agreement has been superseded by a Department of Education formula. Actually, Mr. Wiltzy alluded to that when he presented the Minuteman, uh, budget. It's been superseded by, um, this DOE formula, which is based on population of students as well as economic factors of the communities. Now, in fact, that turns out to be a monetary relationship that is still roughly proportional to the number of students in the school, but it is not exactly as it was written in the original agreement. And in fact, Boxborough has, for the last few years, been paying more than it would have had we been following the regional agreement. One of the reasons that we're very careful about how much we request for our budget is this: We know that we are only getting a little under sixteen percent from sources that are not town funds. That means that we're asking for eighty-four point three percent of our budget from the towns. And we're aware that the regional budget is only one part of the total pie of the town, and you saw a version of this last night. We're aware that we're, Minuteman is in the pie, the Acton Public Schools is in the pie, and of course, the town, all of the town services. So we try to be responsible, because we know we're not the only services provided by the town. And fortunately for us, we have, we get some additional help. We have a very active and generous and supportive group of parents and community members. We go after every grant, we accept every gift, and we appreciate every fundraising activity. Otherwise, we frankly would not be able to survive. This year's estimate for that generosity is approximately two and a quarter million dollars from non-appropriated sources. That's remarkable, and that's very generous. Now, having heard all of that, you might be asking yourself, "Well, what does this mean? How do we compare with other communities?" For situations like this, because we are two systems, we average the costs of both systems. When we do that, we find ourselves just above the state average for per pupil expenditures, just above the state average. We are using the latest figures from the Department of Education, which are nineteen ninety-five, ninety-six, so that we know we're comparing apples to apples, because everybody has to report these same numbers to the state. But we're above the state average, but we're, um, not, we're below the communities around us, as well as those communities with which we are often compared, with which we compare ourselves, and against which our students are competing. So Acton-Boxborough is in red, Littleton, just a little above us, is in green, and Concord Carlisle, with whom we're often compared, is in yellow. Now, it's important to look at this and then look at the next slide, because our SAT scores, our Scholastic Aptitude Test scores, which are the ones that are used for college admission, one of several things used for college admission, not the only thing. But our SAT scores are as good as anybody else's in the state. The red represents the mathematics scores, and the blue, the verbal. AB is the first block on the left. Let me up a little bit higher. AB is the first block on the left. Concord Carlisle is the block right next to us, and remember, they spend two thousand dollars more per student from their appropriated budget than we do. And Littleton is second from the right. They spend forty dollars more per student from the appropriated budget. So, however you look at it, I feel that we are lucky, that we have an excellent school system. We're always in the process of trying to improve it, even when we do things that we think are being done really well, we're always looking to see if we can do them a little differently, a little better. We, you finance us at an adequate level, as Mrs. Williams said. We're working with talented, dedicated, committed staff, students, and parents. We know that, we know it's in the gene pool. We wish we could do more. We would if we had more resources, and then imagine what we might be producing. But, of course, we appreciate the continuing support of the community, and we ask you, at this time, to vote the assessment of eleven million, four hundred and seven thousand, four hundred and fifteen dollars for the Acton-Boxborough Regional School District.
No comments now from the Board of Selectmen, please?
The Board of Selectmen recommends the budgets for both the local and regional schools. The major town boards have worked cooperatively this year through the Acton Leadership Group to establish guidelines, goals, and objectives for reasonable spending plans. We applaud the efforts of the school committee in this regard. The spending proposals that have been placed before this town meeting attempt to address the needs of the entire community, and in every case, they represent compromises in funding levels. None of us asked for or received the level of funding that we all wished for, because we also have a responsibility as town leaders to balance the needs of the community with the ability of the community to pay. We must always keep that objective in mind. You've heard many times this week about the structural problem we face in our ability to raise, inability to raise enough revenues to adequately fund the municipal and educational services. We will need to find more revenue to address the problem. It's clear that in the short term, we will not receive increased state aid, and will have to once again dig deeper into our own pockets by raising local taxes. This next year will be a very difficult one. I can see that now. It is imperative that the boards continue to work together and sustain the trust we have built for each other. Next year will be far more difficult should we encounter divisiveness within and between the boards, but most significantly, if we have divisiveness in the community. We can only solve these structural problems by working together constructively. We urge you to support these budgets.
And from the Finance Committee, please?
The Finance Committee recommends, uh, a vote for the regional budget, and I wanted to make a few comments about the budget to bring a couple of points to, uh, attention. And rather than making yet another slide, I decided to conserve resources and refer you to the off-pink document that was passed, uh, out at the front of the, uh, meeting. On page ten, there's a table, Table Six, to which I would, uh, direct people's attention. The first column is the gross budget, the second column is Acton's budget, and the third, Acton's part, and the third column is Boxborough's part. You see the gross budget of sixteen and a half million in the, uh, first column, and that's an important number. And the point of my comments is to explain the transfer from E and D of ninety-nine thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars, about a hundred thousand dollars, uh, in the gross budget. The E and D is the excess and deficiency, and represents, uh, a transfer from a, uh, an account which the schools maintain, uh, from excess, uh, money left over from various years, and I think it's running at about a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar, uh, balance at the present time. So to show why that transfer was made, uh, I want to direct your attention to the minimum school spending number, which is under Acton, Acton, at eleven point six million. And I want to direct your attention, then, to the Chapter Seventy base aid, which is the one point eight five million under the Acton column. If you combine those numbers and the transfer from E and D, which Acton shares, eighty-one thousand, nine hundred and seven, you get an assessment of eleven million, four oh seven thousand, four fifteen. Now, the eleven million, four oh seven was suggested by the school several months ago to, um, uh, to the, uh, Acton Leadership Group, or the Two Thousand One Group, that would be the assessment. Just within a couple of weeks, we got the number for minimum school spending from the minions of Beacon Hill, and also the base aid from the minions of Beacon Hill, and in order to keep the assessment number the same as it was previously, the transfer from E and D was set to adjust that, uh, eleven million, four oh seven to remain what had been predicted some months, uh, previous. So I wanted to bring to the attention of the meeting that there was a transfer from the excess and deficiency, basically the, quote, "free cash," end quote, equivalent at the school district, in order to, uh, maintain the assessment at a value which had been projected several months in the past. Thank you very much.
Now from the town meeting members, I'll recognize the lady at the back first.
Robin Telkowski, one sixty-nine Main Street and South Acton. I have a number of quick questions, uh, Mr. Moderator, and I would like to violate your, uh, please go down and ask them privately, because I think they're important for the whole community to hear. One of them was, I saw a listing of the combined per pupil expenditure for Acton, Acton-Boxborough, and I think it's important that that be separated out, because I understand that it is, um, different. And the second one was in the very beginning of your presentation, I think it was something to do with, um, expenditures, and there was one marked there about charter school tuition. And I know that has been written up in the beacon, and there's some confusion about how charter school students are paid for from the community, so I wonder if you could answer both of those questions, please.
This is, it would be hard for you to see, but, uh, this is again, using that same nineteen ninety-five, ninety-six, uh, comparison, which works. You'll notice that, I'll push it up even further, thank you, Liz. You'll notice that the Acton-Boxborough per pupil, all, Acton-Boxborough per pupil all-day cost is six thousand, six hundred and fourteen, and if you come down to Acton, the per pupil cost is four thousand, nine hundred and thirty. If we were a K-12 district, we would be closer to the state average. This way, the region is higher and the local is lower. In answer to your second question, I'm gonna try to make it very simple. For the first few years of charter schools, the legislature has offered, uh, assuagements to the communities that are sending students by picking up some of the costs of the charter school tuition. The charter school tuition has, in general, been higher than the tuition or the per pupil expenditures of the communities that are sending students. And what they've done is they've given us back some of that tuition that they're charging. So one year it was fifty percent, the second year was forty percent, the third year was thirty percent, and this current year, there's an additional squiggle, which is that any new students, any students going to any new charter schools have their, the tuition cost entirely paid for, and then a sliding scale formula kicks in. So up until now, we have not actually borne the total cost of the charter school tuition. Yes, well, this is a good example. We had seventeen students, the cost was a hundred and twenty-five thousand, fifty percent kind of reimbursement, a little bit, a little bit less than fifty percent. I think this was the forty percent year. And then, uh, that was ninety-seven, ninety-eight. You see the same, the same, um, pattern. Twenty-five students, the cost was a hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars, the reimbursement was seventy-one. They keep, that's enough, you have some more questions, Robin?
Mr. Cadillac?
Uh, Mr. Moderator, I will take advantage of our facilities. I have one photograph, if I may.
Sure.
As you may expect, I have a somewhat different view of the situation. As you may expect, I have a somewhat different view of the situation. You have heard that we're not doing quite as much as we like to. That's always true. And I don't say that with any negative implications. There is no such thing as the budget for schools. You can always do more. It's hard to tell. There is no line. We always try and do more. Where do you draw the line? That's a balance. What I want to focus on, however, is the last four years' experience in the number of students increase and staff. Lots of numbers, but not complicated. First of all — excuse me. All of these numbers come from this handout. That's the top line. These are the four years that I looked at. Dr. Zimmerman showed you over a longer period of time, but let's look at these four. This is what appears on page fifteen of this handout. The next two columns are the year-to-year increase, starting with ninety-three, ninety-four, and the cumulative increase from ninety-four to ninety-eight. Same thing for grades nine through twelve. This is junior high. This is senior high. And this is the cumulative total, which shows that the number of students over the last four years has increased in the seven-through-twelve system by a hundred and ninety-six. Again, using the numbers right from this handout. This is the staff. Certified staff, non-certified, year-to-year increases, cumulative. Here is the number. The staff has increased by just under sixty. Now, the percentages that Dr. Zimmerman showed for a longer period of time sound comparable. Twenty-seven percent increase in students, twenty-something percent increase in staff. But remember, when you have an increase in students, you don't necessarily have to increase staff. As a matter of fact, staff tends to increase in quantum jumps. The way I prefer to look at it is this last number here. We have added one full-time, full-time — these are full-time equivalent staff positions for each three-point-three increase in students. Or for each ten kids that showed up, we added three full-time positions. What does sixty people mean, full-time positions? Well, let's put it in context. Our entire police department, which is staffed twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three-hundred-and-sixty-five days a year, holidays, weekends, whatever, is less than thirty-five people. We have added almost two police departments' worth. I have a similar chart that I will show you for K-through-six, where we have added just under eighty full-time positions in the last four years. K-through-twelve, we have added a hundred and thirty-seven-point-seven people. Four years. Yes, we have a structural problem. Would you like to translate this into dollars? At an average cost, salary and benefits — and I don't want to get a debate about what that average may be. Maybe Bill can tell us. But I figure it's somewhere between thirty and fifty thousand dollars a year if you include benefits. Some of these people are part-time. But we are talking about full-time equivalent positions. If you take the number of forty thousand, the K-through-twelve increase of a hundred and thirty-seven represents five-point-five million dollars increase in the yearly operating budget. Five and a half million dollars, four years. Do we have a structural problem? You bet. That's not surprising. The surprising is that we can fund this at all. Again, to put it in context, our entire municipal staff, police, fire, highways, libraries, everybody working at Town Hall, you name it, is somewhere in the order of a hundred and sixty people. And here we have added almost a hundred and thirty-eight staff to the school system. Can we keep this up? Of course not. What could we do with five and a half million dollars? Or say we only had added half of this, only a staff member for each seven new students. We would have two million dollars. We would not need to do any free cash transfers, which are eight-hundred-and-seven thousand dollars this year, which we, as Nancy Tavernier just said, will not be able to do next year. We would not need an override, and we might even have some money to do something about the space problems in the schools. But with this kind of a staff increase, we won't be able to do that without overrides, and overrides will not pass. Why do I say that? Because an awful lot of people have told me that in the last couple of months, and seventeen hundred people voted no, in spite of recommendations to the contrary by all the elected and appointed boards. So, if we want to look ahead, do some long-range planning, and see where we're going to be a few years from now, I can do some predicting. Next year, we're going to be told that without a general override, we're going to have to cut staff. Well, we're going to have to cut people that we should not have hired in the first place. We cannot keep adding people at this rate. One more thing, and this is still on the region. I'll have a little more to say on the local. Take a look in this on page sixteen, if you would. I didn't make — I'll shut this off. Take a look on the bottom or lower half, where there are average class sizes. Now, this is the junior and senior high. The average class size at the junior high went from twenty-five last year to twenty-point-five this current year that we're in, and it stayed about even at twenty-two at the senior high. I'm a little confused about our priorities. We're told all this time that the important place to have the lower class sizes are the low elementary grades. Why do we have class sizes of twenty at the junior high? This costs money, money that could be used elsewhere. We have seventy-six sections at the junior high of less than twenty students per class. We have space at the junior high. That could be used for some of the uses that are now being done at the K-through-six, using up classrooms. And you could have lower class, average class sizes at K-through-six. I don't understand these priorities. I am going to vote against both of the regional assessment and the K-through-six. And I don't know about all the people that are interested in schools who are not here tonight, but perhaps this town meeting will consider starting the process of leveling off this increase in staff by reducing the assessment that we vote for the schools, so we do not have to have an override each year for the next four years, which won't pass anyway. Please think about it. I'm going to vote no, and I hope somebody proposes a number that I can vote yes on.
I recognize the superintendent for a response.
Mr. Cadillac's numbers are not wrong, but his interpretation is wrong. First of all, I'm wondering if the proper analogy is not to the police department, but to a teaching hospital, where a lot of people are brought to bear, a lot of different specialists are brought to bear on the teaching that people have to have. But going from the conceptual to the actual, he made three comments that I need to address. The first one has to do with the class size at the junior high school. The reason that the class size, average class size dropped from last year, from nineteen-ninety-six, ninety-seven to ninety-seven, ninety-eight, is that the teachers agreed to teach five classes rather than four, as had been historical. If you take the same number of students and divide by five, you will get a lower class size. They did that because of the understanding that at the junior high, there are some very special needs that are different from the elementary school. We should have small class sizes, K-through-twelve. But there are certain needs of the junior high school age population, and that it was important to get to smaller class sizes. So, that was a clear decision. It was a decision that was made with the staff, and that accounts for that precipitous drop from twenty-five to twenty. But, as it turns out, that was for this year, ninety-seven, ninety-eight. Our dream was to maintain a team of junior high school, a junior high school team of a hundred, with a teacher teaching five classes of twenty each. As it's turning out, because of our increase in our population, the classes will average about twenty-three, not twenty, closer to the year before than to this year. There is no space at the junior high school. I don't quite understand how, after all of the conversations that we've been having about the buildings, it's possible to think that there are any empty rooms at the junior high school. There are no empty rooms at the junior high school. Thirdly, Mr. Cadillac lumped together — it's an inelegant word, but lumped together both certified and non-certified staff. And by doing that, created the impression that we have hired X number of staff at between thirty and fifty thousand dollars. Our greatest increase has not been in certified staff, which is, in fact, staff that we pay between thirty and fifty thousand for, but in non-certified staff, people whom we pay fifteen thousand dollars, fifteen thousand dollars a year too, or twenty thousand dollars a year too. We've hired many, many part-time, non-certified staff members for the reasons I gave in my presentation. A lot of that is driven by their — by individual educational plans. And yes, in those circumstances, it is often a one-to-one relationship. We have students we have brought back from out-of-district placements, which are far more expensive than anything we provide internally. And those students' plans call for them to have an instructional inclusion assistant one-to-one. So, he's right about that. But the impression is that we've done that willy-nilly, and just because we want to increase our budget. We've also changed how we organize the culture of our high school. Steve Donovan's worked very hard with the staff to make it a warmer, more intimate place. This is a very big high school, and students have complained that they feel alienated. Parents have complained that their students, children, feel alienated. So, what he's done is he's changed the arrangement in the libraries. We have a few more assistants there. We've added monitors, I mentioned that in my presentation, to keep students from leaving the campus with their cars, to keep some sort of semblance of civility in the school. We've also, as you know, put a lot of technology into our schools. I just saw today that on a state report, Acton-Boxborough ranks in the top ten school districts in the Commonwealth. Report that just came out today. That is an investment. There's no question about it. It's an investment in teacher training. It's an investment in curriculum development. It's an investment in the technology itself. That technology needs to be supported. And we've added some technology assistance in our labs, and we've added some technology support for our teachers. So, he's not wrong that we've added staff. But wherever possible, we've added non-certified staff, because frankly, it is less costly, and it does decrease our adult-to-student ratio, which is what we want. We want to have fewer students with more adults. We've done this very carefully. We've not done it willy-nilly. We've looked at each situation individually. And we don't — we feel, we invite anybody who wants to spend a day at the high school or at the junior high school to see if you can find a place where we have extra, unneeded, additional staffing. And Mrs. Williams reminded me to remind you that when — again, bottom line, you need to compare our per pupil expenditure with other communities. We are very efficient, if you want to apply the word "efficient" to our personnel.
I'll recognize Mr. Cavaretta first.
I'll read my turn.
I'm sorry. Mr. Cadillac, you said what?
I'll wait till the rest of the march.
Fine, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Dean Cavaretta, 536 Massachusetts Avenue. Mr. Moderator, I rise as a graduate of the schools here in Acton, as a member of the Housing Authority here in town, as a coach on the Acton football and lacrosse team here at the high school. And I take a somewhat different angle. I want to first commend all the local officials and our school committee for a very difficult year. God knows, I've seen them at a lot of meetings. And I just wanted to briefly talk about what has already been raised quite well, and it has been called the structural problem. And this larger structural problem has plagued our schools, this town meeting, for close to a decade. And that structural problem is ultimately the biggest cost driver of them all. It's impacting our schools, our students, and our wallets every year. And that is, our schools are underfunded and overregulated by the state legislature. Underfunded and overregulated by the state legislature. At the time, at the same time, many people are claiming that our schools are becoming overcrowded, and this is certainly the case. These state policies are taking every extra budget dollar from our town meeting warrants, and particularly the school warrants, articles. You and I are forced to make up the difference. Specifically, number one, the lack of our fair share of state aid for schools. When combined with unfunded state mandates, that popular new phrase, in special education, time and learning, as was already said, and the prospects for all-day kindergarten, which very well might be coming down the pike by the state government. They're going to require all-day kindergarten. When you combine, when you take those into account, we are going backwards in terms of state aid at a time when every dollar counts. And this effect, these effects are having very personal and human effects in our town, and we see it every day. Cuts in popular extracurricular activities. As Dr. Zimmerman mentioned, an ever-increasing reliance on PTO or ABSTAF-type organizations for assistance. The imposition of fees in our schools and other areas of the municipality. And one that tickles my spine more than anything else, which is absolutely unfair and unnecessary, is the imposition of an athletic fee on our student athletes and their parents. Not because of the locality's fault or our school committee's fault, but they are being forced to make up the difference in many, many different areas. And I might say they've been very, they've been very good at it, and they've tried very hard to do so. Finally, you know, overrides themselves. If you believe the League of Women Voters and their analysis, Acton Elementary alone should have received over five million dollars more from nineteen-ninety-three to nineteen-ninety-eight. That amount, if it's true, would have covered much of the failed expansion question in February. It's hard to believe, but if we received our fair share, the February question need not even have occurred. And finally, the issue of displacement and anxiety. One thing people my age and older people in our town all share in common is that we want to stay a part of this community. We don't want to have to leave or be priced out because of failed policies. Having seen all this firsthand from very different vantage points, I am deeply concerned. Why, in this time of booming state budgets, booming surpluses, do Acton schools find themselves in this situation? Why? Why is Acton receiving less resources from the state but asked to take on more and more responsibility? Over the next five years, we know this can't continue.
Mr. Cavaretta, could you draw your remarks about the state to a close, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Quite simply, although it's a small portion of the budget, it's a very big piece of the article because of all the other things it has and it's impacting us. This can't continue. I applaud everyone trying to come up with solutions, but clearly, things must change, and they can change, considering we have the resources at the state level. Thank you very much.
Mr. Liberty?
Jesse Liberty on Till Drive, speaking neither as a member of the FinCom nor as a nascent member of school committee, but merely as a parent and citizen. I want to agree with Mr. Cadillac, this is not a sustainable situation. We cannot sustain continued years of increasing enrollment and flat budgets. We cannot sustain 90th percentile performance with 50th percentile investment. We do so merely by the Herculean efforts of an extraordinary staff, very impressive students and parents, school committee and administration. Now, I intended to sit quietly tonight, I worked very hard at it. But in a year in which the region increases its enrollment by, I believe, over 100 students, and the budget is flat, I have to speak out when this budget is challenged. Because if it should be challenged, it should be challenged only because it is overly conservative. And I know that Mr. Cadillac has been speaking to a number of people, I spoke to roughly 1,232, I think, who told me that they would like to see the schools funded. And I rise tonight merely to point out that this budget's only problem is how limited it is, and I hope as a town, we will approve it resoundingly and without question. Thank you very much.
I recognize the gentleman at the back, please.
Greg Savage, 26 Stony Ridge Way. I think statistics could say whatever you want statistics to say. I don't have any nice overheads that only take the last four years. Mr. Cadillac himself said it comes in steps. If you look at the six years before that, 200 students, 10 additional staff, that's a 20-to-1 ratio. Let's not only look at the last four years, let's look at the last 10 and agree that it comes in steps. And I agree with Mr. Liberty, this is an underfunded budget. The Acton school system is also underfunded. We are, the students that are getting those test scores and winning those awards had average class sizes that were significantly lower than what the class sizes are today, and will continue to have higher class sizes. And I think we're being penny-wise, dollar-foolish. In the long run, people move into this town because of our school system primarily. That's why we've had the same population but additional students. And if, and if the schools go down because average class sizes go up, our property values will follow, but the schools going down. I support this, I support this budget because it's the only thing on the table, but I don't commend anybody for it. I think somebody should take, should have guts and step up and do what's right for the kids.
Because it's always possible to move the previous question at any time, I'm, and I'm not suggesting anybody does that, but I'm going to ask if there's anyone who wishes to speak against this article. We've had a number of people speaking for it. I probably should divide the microphones, but I won't bother to do that right now. So I understand, Mr. Gresser, you'd like to speak against?
Thank you.
Then I'll recognize you next.
Mike Gresser, 6 Elliott Circle. Mr. Moderator, the school superintendent spoke most eloquently about the achievements of our schools in last year and then in previous years. These achievements, I think, are subject of great pride to the town, pride not only in our students themselves, but pride in every single person that works for the schools. Mr. Cadillac spoke also equally eloquently, I believe, about the unsustainability of the rate of growth that we have seen in the school budget over the last few years. This is a major problem that we are not going to solve by shouting at each other, but it's a major problem that we have to address. The school budget is today the vast majority of the town's spending. It represents far more than two-thirds of the, of the town's spending, and it drives our taxes and will continue to drive our taxes over the foreseeable future. The growth that we have seen in the school budget over the last few years shows that in the regional school system, we've risen by 36 percent, an average rate of 5 percent in the years 93 through this year. The public school system, we've gone up nearly 50 percent. That says that today, we're looking at a school budget of $30 million combined, with the regional system being some $16 million. If we continue out over five years at the, at the today's rates, we're looking to a $40 million budget for the schools. If we move out over 10 years, we're looking to 55 million. 15 years, we're looking to nearly $75 million. Now, I progress out, that may seem an incredible amount of time. I moved with my wife to this town in 1978. That's nearly 12, well, that's 20 years ago. To me, that is not a very long time in my life, and I hope for the citizens of this town, it's not going to be a long time in their life. So these are numbers that if we continue at this daily rate, or this rate that we've seen over the last five, six years, these are the numbers that we're looking at. They are basically not sustainable. We already saw reaction this year in the rejection of the school building program, and I am deeply concerned that we will see catastrophic rejections in the future. Now remember, we have gone through, in the last five years, also some very, very good times. We've gone through good times in the terms of the economy and jobs. We have gone through good times in terms of state funding. We haven't seen major funding cuts. We have gone through good times in terms of choice money coming into the schools. It has been the best of times so far. We cannot expect these good times to continue or do better. These add to the fear of if we don't start addressing the problem, we're suddenly going to wake up one day to find a deck equivalent has gone belly-up again, or has started laying off lots of people. Many of our guys sitting around in their $400,000, $600,000 houses are not going to be VPs anymore, and the town's going to have a real big problem. We have to address it before then so that we don't have a catastrophic effect on the kids when it happens. I'll say some more when we get up for the, for the public schools. But today, basically, I must say, and I agree with Mr. Cadillac, we have got to start right now addressing the problem of budget growth. And I intend to vote against it, not because I'm against schools, but because I don't see anything being done to address this serious problem, and this will be my personal signal to say, please, you must address it.
I'm going to recognize Mrs. Reeser, she has been standing here for some time.
Representative Pam Reeser. I stand to speak. First of all, I've never seen this body used as a political event before, and I really object to it personally. And I will not, I will not demand equal time. However, I do want to respond briefly. I do not rise to defend the formula that is used to distribute money, but that was a response to court decisions, as many of you know, in the education reform bill. And I don't rise to defend some of the time and learning and other numbers because those were created by the Department of Education and not by the legislature. But I do tell you that we have worked very hard to raise the standards of education throughout this state, and we have been very successful overall and continue to be. And in the next two years, there will be a strong effort to try and change the way the formulas are, and we must be involved in that. We as citizens, we as legislators, businessmen, we must all work together to make sure that the support is there for all schools and not just for the schools that have been struggling over the years, because now we are the ones struggling, and it is a serious problem. And I recognize it, and each year, we have worked hard to raise the minimum standard, and this year, it will go up to $100 per student. But that's not a big piece when you look at the whole picture. And I continue to work for monies, money's coming back. We've been very successful in getting educational technology funds and various other funding sources. So there has been state money coming back in addition, and it's been a strong support for our school system. And I would defend our record at trying to keep the quality of education very high in the state. Thank you.
Is there someone else who wishes to speak in opposition to this article? I see a lot of people standing pro. Mr. Cadillac, you've already spoken, and so I'm going to call on a couple more, then I'll call on you. You'll have a chance before we cut off debate, all right? If we do cut off debate. Mr. Ashton.
Mr. Miller.
I'm Mr. Miller. Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. My eyes are also, I'm one of the older people that, it's the eyes that go.
It's the glasses, we both wear glasses tonight. Bob Miller, 84 Windsor Avenue. My reaction to this debate is that we're, as a town, stuck between a rock and a hard place. And unfortunately, because of that situation, we're waxing poetically against the school board and the budget that's before us. The reality is that the net of 2.8 percent after the adjustment for the loss of the students leaving due to choice is not a substantial increase, given the burdens on the school. Burdens which other people have already spoken eloquently, have been placed by the state. If the schools had not done anything about SED that they've done the last three years, we could go back to a presentation that I recall seeing when I moved to this town about the soaring cost of SED. Schools have been innovative in that process by bringing students back into the district, eliminating out-of-district expenses, and bringing on one-on-one teacher-student ratios, which of course has driven this number of 60, some of the partial, partially driven the 60 increase in teachers or certified, non-certified staff. In addition, we heard the town talk about supporting previously voted-on projects and continuing to support them, like NARA and other projects. The support of technology in the schools is no different than that continued support that this town body voted on several years ago to put in place in the schools. You cannot put technology in without technology specialists and people to teach the teachers and to teach, and to teach teachers how to teach with the technology. We've heard about volunteerism in the schools. I've never seen so many non-teachers in the schools, both the grade school and the, and the high school. I personally grew up in a private education program, Catholic schools, did fundraising, sold newspapers, sold magazines, wrapping paper, and I'm surprised to find my students doing the same thing in public educated facilities because there was no other support. I'm also surprised when I have to pay $150 to my daughter to play softball, and more importantly, to pay for science workbooks for my son in junior high. I wonder about those parents who can't afford that either. The reality is that these are the choices that are left to the schools and the school body, given the constraints. The net of all that, what really bothers me at this point in town is that after these next several articles, we're about to pull a set of articles that would have encouraged commercial development, which I've said before at this town meeting, is the net problem. There is no tax base in this town. You're not going to get support from the state. You're not going to get support from anybody else, and you have to solve the problem here. And the first thing we do is to pull, as the planning board, under the pressure of the people in this town, are pulling the critical articles in this town that could help solve the tax base in this town by creating some commercial development that's suitable for a town like ours, and we don't have any. So I support this article in full and encourage the town to come out in equal support and angst when we're working and talking about how to develop the tax bases in town, because you're not going to get support from the state.
The lady at the back.
Marilyn Leeds, Bromfield Road. I move the previous question.
I'm not going to let you do that, I promise, Mr. Cadillac.
As soon as he's done.
I will take Mr. Cadillac first, then I'll come back to you. Mr. Cadillac.
Couple, very quick. In random order. Average per pupil expenditures and SAT scores. We have had for probably more than 20 years that I remember lowered an average per pupil cost and higher than average SAT scores. Somebody's trying to cut me off.
No clapping, no, no, I'm serious about that now. Absolutely serious.
Come to the microphone if you're going to express your opinions and...
I normally say that.
Anyway.
I will say that, yes. Go ahead, Mr. Cadillac.
Anyway, the conclusion I draw from that is there is no real relationship between per pupil expenditures and SAT scores, and we could spend quite a bit of time on that. But for those who are still concerned about it, please don't be, you know, we have established the reputation of the school system with much higher class sizes and so on. You've heard all that before. Next very quick point, Dr. Zimmerman said that some of these staff increases are $15,000 a year, part-time people. We're talking about full-time equivalents, and I said when I made my comment that I don't really want to debate what the average cost of those 60 people is, but it's certainly in the millions of dollars. That's the only point I want to, is this still on? That's the only point I want to make. What's driving this budget, and that's, that's the one thing we can all agree on, are the cost of personnel. If we allow staffing to grow, we have no chance of solving the problem. One last point to all the people who say we're not spending enough. Jesse, you made a campaign out of it, a successful one. I hear you, and it gets applause, but please tell us where the money is going to come from. Please tell us that. Please tell us how much the override is going to have to be. And please listen to the reaction, and please think about what's going to happen when that override gets voted down, which is what happened this year. Because it's easy to say we should spend more money if you don't say where the money is going to come from.
And now I'll recognize the lady at the back.
Marilyn Leeds, Bromfield Road. I move the previous question.
Do I hear a second to cut off debate?
Second.
All in favor of cutting off debate, say aye.
Aye.
All say no?
No.
Debate is cut off. Well now, vote on the motion as originally read under Article 34. All in favor of the motion as read, say aye.
Aye.
All say nay. Article 35 was passed by consent. We are now on Article 36, dealing with the Acton Public Schools Budget and the motion. Under Article 36 is Mr. Scanlon, could you somehow, okay, thank you. Mr. Scanlon moves that the town raise and appropriate $13,687,248 for the Acton local schools for the period July 1st, 1998 to June 30th, 1999, and to raise such amount, $150,000 be transferred from free cash and $13,537,248 be raised and appropriated. Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Mr. Scanlon, to your motion.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. As your local chairman, I'd like to introduce this budget presentation with three short points. One, I'm going to tell you where we've been this year and where we're going next year. I'm going to quickly lay out where I think this local school committee could probably do better. And the third point, I'm going to quickly lay out where you can help us. We spent a significant amount of time this year delving into our curriculum execution. Curriculum as it dealt with context, curriculum as it dealt with how our budget constraints have affected it. We dealt with it in relation to how it affects, how it's bumping up against our MCAS issues, which you'll soon bump up against in May. And we spent a significant amount of time as a local, looking out to the region as to how our curriculum interfaces with the two, and how that affects our budget. The greatest portion of the year, a significant portion of the year, was spent on our space We brought forward, truly in good faith, what we felt was a long-term solution that the demographics dictated. And looking forward to next year, we're not going to bow away from that issue. That issue will again be a substantive part of where this committee will go next year. That issue will again be a substantive part of where this committee will go next year. We looked at, in the realm this year in putting together the budget, the effects of special education as a driver is affecting our budget. As the superintendent will discuss with you later, that is a significant driver, and I'll revisit that in a couple minutes. Where do we go next year? As I said earlier, the building program is going to command our attention. The other significant issue that's going to evolve next year is the renegotiation of our personnel contracts. What can we do better? I think at the local level, we can spend a significant amount of time on our political sensitivities. I think we need to look very deeply as to how we relate as a committee to the various constituencies within the school community and without. That to me is going to be one of my major, I think I'm going to encourage the board that that will be a major focus, because this is pivotal to this building issue. This issue of our population dynamics and the enrollment issues at the local level will not go away, and we're going to have to convince you of that fact. We were not capable of that this year, I'm convinced, we will convince you of that next What can you do to help? I want and I expect you, as a community, to become engaged in this building program. We've seen since the loss of the override, a significant growth in support at the parental level. I want and I expect that to grow past the parental level into a community level. We saw a lot of community, broad-based community support from many articles last night. That was community support. The schools are part of an integrated community, all of which we all bear responsibility. I want you to become engaged. I want you to deal past the motion, I want you to deal past denial, and to accept the issue at hand. Second place, I look for your support, is on the state political level. I know it's a very hard sell to convince legislatures to drive issues forward. We have a significant problem brewing at the local school level. Not a problem, it's a responsibility. We have, in the special education arena, significantly growing populations at the integrated preschool level, significantly. This program is a state-mandated program certainly, but it's a handoff that the state gives us. They carry, or they support this activity from birth through age three. At age three, they hand our responsibility off to us. Part of our significant, part of the growth that we have in our personnel at the elementary level is driven by that need. That need, and this is, we are experiencing nonlinear growth over the last four to five years in that arena. Those children move into the local level then, and demand significant resources. What can you do at the state level? There's a special education financing bill that is now moribund, it's on the table, because the legislature does not want to deal with it. It's a, it's a bill that would, we can argue over the semantics of the laws, but the baseline purpose of that bill is to fund programs such as this, and to encourage, to encourage towns to bring back special education programs, as we have been doing over the past several years, which have driven the numbers that Mr. Cadillac was talking about. I feel in my heart that that's a state responsibility, and that I encourage you to speak with the representatives you saw tonight, and any others that you can talk to, Mr. Durand and all. Finally, the last thing I'd like you to join me with, I ask for your support, and that, I would like you to join with me in thanking the two members of the board here, that this is their last public function as part of the board. As a colleague of theirs, I can readily testify to the fact that Nikki Williams and Nancy Banks have labored significantly at your behest, one for six years, one for three. Always keeping in mind, not only the school system they serve, but the entire community. And I would, I want to, I want to say quite frankly here, that you got your money's worth out of these two women. All right? I was more long-winded than I was allowed, so I thank you for your deference. The superintendent will present the budget.
It's a little bit difficult to present two separate budgets immediately, continuously, because to some extent, you're going to hear some of the same things again. We try not to repeat ourselves. However, the local school district's budget does not include everything we believe we need to maintain the quality of our school district. Yesterday, you heard Mr. Zelikow's story about Acton parents looking in conquered. Every day, I hear from parents who are concerned about their children's class size. We are experiencing several problems. We worry about the increasing enrollment, the larger-than-desirable class size, insufficient space, the need to maintain and expand our buildings, increasing costs in special education, and program needs not currently being met. Our pie for the Acton public schools doesn't look that different. We are a personnel-intensive enterprise. Most of our money goes for people. In this case, 82.9 percent of the budget is committed to personnel. If you look at our chart that shows the increase in enrollment of students versus the increase of instaffing, you'll see a somewhat similar pattern. The green, remember the left, is the, in hundreds, it's students, and the green represents Acton students. The axis on the right is in tens, and it represents staff. The red or orange, I'm not sure how it's showing up, is teachers, and the blue is instructional assistants, non-certified staff, instructional assistants. Since 1990, our student population has increased from 1,693 to 2,348. That's a 39 percent increase. Now here's what's frightening, that was actually on October 1st. It was 2,348. On April...